Hey Seth, did you have any more before we go to our public hearing?
It was just a briefest update on the encampment and also just put put council on notice that we can have a formal toast for Chief Dahl at the at the end of the meeting, it'd probably be appropriate to put that under
Old business.
Old or or new business, but we look forward to an opportunity to express our gratitude at the end of this meeting for for Chief Dahl. I just, you know, I know we discussed this this afternoon very briefly, but of course, we're engaged in the ongoing effort to end the encampment at City Hall. As you all know, we've been working very actively to create the conditions to justify ending the encampment. It's our intention that the the disenchantment here will follow an orderly process, a humane process. There'll be more to more to come on that. I think you all know that last week it was reported that we've put a second Homes Now Tiny Home site at Frank Jerry Parking Lot at Civic Field to increase capacity there, entering into an agreement with the county to provide 25 homes for tiny homes for that site. We're hoping that that's going to go operational this week. We're putting the final touches on that. We continue to be involved in active efforts to work on another site for the Low Barrier folks were putting those pieces together as it relates to working to find an operator and getting that properly conditioned and some partnerships with some of our jurisdictional partners on that as well. So I'm sure there'll be a report put out soon to give you a status update in more detail when that's all ready to go. But I know that the city, the county, the health department, the entire community is concerned for the safety of the people camping on the City Hall lawn and the library lawn. So we're doing the best we can every day on that.
Yeah, Seth, you mentioned two things, the the soon to go online encampment, which is not a low barrier shelter. It's a supervised encampment and then also maybe a lower barrier shelter. But there's a third piece, which is base camp itself. One of my concerns I expressed last week is they were having to stop people from coming inside the base camp, basically declining guests because they couldn't ensure that they were COVID free. My understanding is that now there's a new testing regime in place that health officials have approved some kind of mechanism so base camp can start accepting more overnight guests. Did you want to say anything about that or tell? I don't know the details?
Yeah, well, certainly not for me to to report details of what the base camp authorities are doing. But what I can say at a very high level is that there has been a a new technology for very much quicker results after testing and that logistically they're working on a method by which people can get in an orderly way processed back in who are eligible and test negative. So I'm hopeful that that effort is going to be only increasing in in the coming days. So that's that's good news because of course, in recent days, their numbers have been way down and they have considerable capacity availability at base camp. So I suspect we'll be hearing from folks at base camp soon. That's all I feel qualified to say because they need to speak for themselves. Other than that, I'll just say that I'm looking forward to a hopeful new year. I think there's a lot of positive things that are coming with the vaccine and the report from from Erica, the the prospect just on the news tonight, the Congress is getting close to agreeing on a considerable stimulus, which is going to affect a lot of positive things locally, including unemployment benefits and and paycheck protection program increases and a whole variety of things are going to be very helpful to our our local economy and our local health. So good news is coming. We just need to pull together and get through the next few months. I know we will. So back to you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Bill?
Next person is Doug Robertson.
Doug Robertson, that's what you said. I'm Doug Gustafson, just letting you know. So hello, this is Doug from Homes Now Not Later. Homes Now currently operates Unity Village, the only tiny home community in Bellingham. Homes Now has been
What do we got going here?
Hey, what's up? You hear me now? Sorry, sorry. They said Doug Robertson, so I was
Doug Gustafson?
Okay, you hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, this is Doug Homes Now from Homes Now Not Later. Homes Now currently operates Unity Village, the only tiny home community currently operating in Bellingham. Homes Now has been asked by the city of Bellingham to manage an emergency tent encampment within the next few days. This tent encampment will quickly become a tiny home community over the coming weeks. Campers who are on City Hall who would do well in a community setting and working toward a self management structure in the long run and able to work well with others would be prioritized and are currently being interviewed. And we already have five people who have been accepted and we're glad that progress is being made so quickly and we will be great neighbors to the local neighborhood. I want to thank the city and the mayor for moving forward quickly to make progress to house more people. I want to make clear that as well that this is a small victory and the fight toward ending homelessness, one person at a time is much longer and much more work will need to be done from all of us to solve this problem. Homes Now will keep providing as many services as we can and we'll keep trying to increase the level of service for every resident who lives with us from any village with the a goal of having as much of a self managed structure as possible, meaning the residents run it together mutually. As a result of urgent actions being taken by local governments during a time of emergency, Homes Now in partnership with the city of Bellingham and Wacom County is setting up an emergency tiny home village called Swift Haven. The specific three way partnership is as follows. Number one, the city is providing the site, a parking lot of Frank Jerry Fields at Civic Field Complex in the Puget Neighborhood. Number two, Homes Now is the operator manager of the site. Number three, Wacom County is providing modular structures with a tiny home design from 360 Modular in Ferndale. Basic units eight by 10 for interior. Each unit comes with heat, insulation and electricity similar to a small bedroom. Swift Haven will be in operation until spring of 2021 where it will be moved to a more long term site. Swift Haven will start with tents and as the modular structures become available within the coming weeks, all tents will be replaced with modular structures. Because of the emergency nature of the encampment, it did not go through the city's standard review process, which normally takes a few months. However, Homes Now wants to be great neighbors to the Puget Neighborhood and we wanted to answer any questions or concerns about Swift Haven and make the neighborhood feel more at ease as a result. We are doing a series of Zoom meetings to answer any of those questions or concerns. Those meetings are on our Facebook page as events with the correct Zoom link. The first meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, December 15th at 6:00 PM and the second meeting is Sunday, December 20th at 11:00 AM. The work is not done with our latest site. We'll be able to help around 28 people. However, Homes Now is just one organization. We can only do so much as one group, but there's around 1,000 people in Wacom County who still need help and there's not enough adequate sheltering. Okay. We all need to work together, blah, blah, blah.
It was Doug Gustafson truly who wanted to speak. He is signed up and he is on the line.
Doug Robertson, you mean? We just heard.
Yeah, this is this is Doug Robertson.
Go ahead, Doug.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Doug Robertson, 800 McKinsey. I'm here testifying in favor of the docketing of the rezone of that portion of 10th Avenue right away and that adjacent area of the port.
Gentlemen, we'll now go to our 15 minute public comment period. Elizabeth, how many speakers do we have signed up?
14 right now.
Okay, we'll do this for 15 minutes and we'll run through our business and then we'll come back to it. So go ahead, Elizabeth.
First person is Canoeie Rappaport.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council members. First and foremost, I would like to speak about Camp 210. They still need a site as a capacity for at least 50 shelters for the city or county to buy 50 pallet shelters on top of the 50 the county has already purchased and for funding for a social worker for a low barrier shelter. This is an emergency and the pandemic only makes this situation worse. Thank you for the ongoing negotiations to find solutions to Camp 210, Mayor Seth Fleetwood and the city, and thank you, the Health Department, for what you've done in providing testing for the residents of camp. I know you all have opportunities to access funding to support this camp. But if you are finding it hard to to find funding, I have a few things to say about the overburdened budget we spend on our police. The words I share are from INK, one of the organizations of 11 coalition members and eight additional sponsors of the Defund BPD campaign at defundbpd.org and their members and those in the community. They are similar to the words shared by Community, a local farm worker rights organization. A budget tells you a lot about what an institution values. On December 7, 2020, the Bellingham City Council unanimously made their values clear. And again, I'm reading from the words from INK. Public input isn't welcome. Black and Indigenous lives don't matter and militarized policing is more important than infrastructure, education, public health, firefighters, social workers or anything else. The over 5,000 signatures on two petitions calling for cuts to the police budget ignored. The hundreds of people who showed up to rallies and marches throughout the summer demanding investments and fostering black life dismissed. The dozens of residents who pointed out towards programs and the possibilities the city could reallocate funds towards forgotten by the council members before comments even close. Many in the West are used to thinking about politics as defined by two competing visions of good, struggling against each other for control. That's not the way things work here. There is no sunlight between council members where it counts. They are all members of the cop party, friends of the landlords and white business owners, struggling against the people who want justice and peace. Of course, we look forward to the retirement of council members who have the temacity to lecture a black woman and when she can cannot point out racism during public comment. The mayor and other three council members have until 2023 before they face reelection. We'll still be around then if we've got long memories. But this goes much deeper than those who sit in the seats at City Hall. It's a problem of our very concept of a modern city because this year has demonstrated that cities are essentially protection brackets for landlords and businesses. Their primary purpose, if you look at where they invest their resources, is doing violence to houses, people, people of color, poor people and others who fall outside of the local definition of acceptable slash profitable. Council will congratulate itself, as I've seen tonight, on handling over a couple million to a bunch of homophobic Christians who treat the people they're supposed to serve with contempt. They hand over 20 times that sum to a bunch of armed thugs with long records of domestic violence, abuse of authority and racist sexist ableist harassment.
Go ahead, next.
HK? HK?
Please put me, please put me at the back of the list. I have some sound problems. Can you hear?
Yeah, we'll 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 come back after we come back. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Carly Nelson. Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm just, I'm a resident here in the city of Bellingham and I just wanted to say that I am in favor of the emergency encampment. I feel that we're kind of morally obligated to do this. And I think it's great that we're going forward with this and I just hope that the city can make for a nice smooth permitting process for Homes Now Not Later and that is all.
Thank you very much.
Laura Boucher.
Hi, good evening, council members and those attending this meeting tonight. I wanted to advocate my support for the recommendations from leaders from the Homeless Strategies Work Group to provide immediate emergency winter shelter for our neighbors living outside with inadequate winter shelters for the season. According to the company Pallet, representatives have confirmed that they have 50 units of housing available right now to be assembled onsite where appropriate. We've had over 100 people camping at or near the Bellingham City Hall for over a month now, as we understand. Nights have been freezing all the way down to 28 degrees in Bellingham recently and the company Pallet could provide a roof and four walls for at least 50 people immediately. Please recognize the recommendations from the Homeless Strategies Work Group and make this effort your top priority to shelter those in danger of hostile winter conditions. I thank you sincerely and I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Maureen Traxler.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, council members and everyone else listening. My name is Maureen. I'm a resident here of Bellingham and I currently work as an occupational therapist at St. Joseph's at the hospital. And I just want to highly endorse Camp 210 and as an emergency that I believe that the city has a moral obligation to address. I know that it is a very complicated situation as is COVID and those two things combined make for a lot of challenges. But I really just want to urge us to be creative in this, just as we have been able to see. We're now getting vaccines in a record amount of time. If we can solve that problem, then we certainly can solve this problem. I believe that it is really first and foremost a moral issue. We all have a moral obligation to care for each other and especially our most vulnerable. It is clear that this is a matter of prioritizing this. If we can prioritize it, I think that we can find a solution and it is clear that there's also more beds available. So I please urge you to make a priority to go ahead and get those beds. I think it's, what is it? The 360 pallet shelters, 50 of them available by Christmas. Let's do this. Christmas is coming around. That is a time where we would be celebrating Jesus who advocated for the poor in his honor for our Christmas gift to this community. Please prioritize our homeless. Do not make this an issue of not being able to get to the library and pitting each other against each other. Yes, that's that's what I have to say. I really hope that we can make this work. Please work with the organizers now to find a solution for all of us. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you very much.
Marcus D. Stidham.
Go ahead, Marcus.
Hi, it's Marcus D. I don't know how I got unmuted there. Anyway, um, I am, I'm the homeless advocate on the Homeless Strategies Work Group and it's been my pleasure to serve there and it's my pleasure to speak to you all tonight. One thing that has been affirmed over and over again in recent conversations with our mayor Seth Fleetwood is that a tent is not a viable shelter. This was really driven home and proven when we, when we all did, when we all saw the wonder that that Winter Haven was, what a great project that was, great administration, lots of support. But when the snow flew, there was just no way that the tents could hold up. Well, the snow is just around the corner, guys. So one thing that I think that we probably should be able to agree on is that if you're going to be moving anybody anywhere, they need to be moving into a shelter and not into a tent somewhere, especially if it's somewhere that's even more exposed than where they are now with where they're around trees and behind a big building. If a nor'easter blew in right now, it would actually protect people who are in front of that building right now for what that's worth. And just try it. There are people out there who have probably not experienced 60 degrees on their skin in weeks. And so, um, we need to be aware of that. And it also, I would also like to point out the rollout that we have with this Ferndale, these Ferndale buildings that are coming. I read the contract today. I think they they show up on the seventh, there will be five of them. And then a week later, there will be five more and a week after that, five more. It will be a weekly rollout of five per. That's 10 weeks if you go for 50 of those. So that's a long winter, isn't it, to be in a tent? And meanwhile, I also have communications from pallet shelters down in Everett. They just haven't heard from the county. They're wondering what's going on. They ask, they're asking what's happening. Well, I'm, that was surprising for me. They were happy to tell me that 50 shelters right now, ready to go on your lot. They'll be assembled before Christmas. This is a promise from them. They're ready to do that. They're great people. I've toured the facility. It works great. I'm not slamming the Ferndale operation, but obviously it's a slower rollout. We need, we need to do everything we can. They're similarly priced. We're in an emergency. If if emergency sheltering is not triggered, trigger it. It was our job as the Homeless Strategies Work Group is is the duty of the Health Department and may I remind you all, we're still in a pandemic. It's very important that we all engage this together. We can, this can be a community and is a community solution where we're in partnership with the government. We can do this together. This, this is a great moment for Bellingham to step up and lead. And don't be afraid to lead because we're going to take this to the other cities like wildfire when it works. And it's going to work if we all buy into finally helping our neighbors, get them out of the doorways, get them out of the weeds. Quit letting them die. Quit letting them lose limbs. Please help these people. They are our neighbors. They're, I've known some of these people for years on our streets. These are your neighbors. We must care for them now. We must help them up. There are people who just need a job for real. And there's people who do need treatment. Give it to them.
Thank you. Elizabeth, how many more we have and then we'll all decide if we're gonna?
10 more.
Well, we're gonna stop now and then we're gonna go on and finish our business. Then we'll come back. So we're gonna go now to our finance and economic development and the council chair is Councilman Pinky Vargas. Now we will go back to our comment period. Thank you for your patience and go ahead, Elizabeth.
Next person signed up is Mary Stidham.
Hi, this is Mary Stidham. I want to start by thanking Seth Fleetwood for his attention and care for Camp 210 and all of the efforts he's making to make that protest a successful protest. He really is working with the volunteers that are helping out at Camp 210 in order to find housing for everyone that's that's on the lawn right now. What I do hope though is that the city can put some money into buying more pallet shelters. And I say pallet shelters because I, those are the preferred shelter over the shelters that are being purchased from the company in Ferndale. Now I understand Sad Paul probably wanted to keep the money in the county and I I appreciate buying locally and all of that. But I do wish that it he, it had been considered that the snow is coming and we don't have 10 weeks to wait for all of these shelters to be built. We need at least 150 more and the pallet shelters then down south in Everett, they can be provided to us now. That's the only way that this Camp 210 is going to have any success in ending and removing themselves from City Hall is if pallet shelters are provided for every single person that is on those lawns. So I hope that you all consider doing what's right and sheltering those that are the the least fortunate among us this winter and moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Teresa Muirs.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to take this opportunity. It's your last meeting of the year and I've been watching the others and refraining from making comments as difficult as it's been. I just really want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council and to the police chief. You know, I sit back and I I look at the progress that has been made and I've been doing outreach to the homelessness town for 17 years. I'm the senior outreach worker. So you know, there's so much that's taken place since we started this. When I think of 2003 and I think of now and I even just the last couple of years, the addition of the Grace Program, the addition of the Leeds Program, the the expansion of the Triage Center, which will probably open up after the first of the year. The larger shelter and the fact that it's going to have actual beds, that's exciting. I want to congratulate Homes Now on, you know, getting this new temporary shelter and I think that's a great, a great answer. I want to thank, I want to thank the churches that are are contributing so much and I know people aren't recognizing that. They act like other people aren't doing anything and there are so many people that are contributing so much to the less fortunate in our community. Um, you know, I see the the First Baptist Church and Interfaith, what Interfaith is doing and Fountain Community Church and the First Congregational Church and 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 Faith Lutheran and the Trinity Lutheran and the blankets they make for us to give to the homeless from the Hope House and from St. Paul's and I just, I'm so impressed and and our mental health, they've really ramped up all of the Unity Unity Care and Compass and Lake Wacom Treatment Center and Seymour have all ramped up and are doing so much more and have more caseworkers. Whatever they're saying at 210, I don't care. There are caseworkers working with a lot of people out there. There's, there's a lot of things that are happening and I've heard tonight a lot of that word collaboration. And I'm so impressed with the collaboration that I see between the Lighthouse Mission, the Opportunity Council, the churches, the mental health people, all working together, the community paramedic, the trio, I mean, it's just amazing the number of people that are working together to solve the problems that exist and the opportunities to solve these problems in our community. And I want to thank all of those people. I don't, you know, there's so much that we've been able to do over the years because we've done it with dignity. We've done it with compassion. We've done it with caring. We've done it with honor and we haven't had to, you know, call people names and tear them down and 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 put them down and and, you know.
Time.
Thank you, Teresa.
Melissa Weisner.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, none of those churches have opened their doors and let any of those people in while it's freezing outside. So she can keep going off about that. That's great. We need help though. And yeah, and I'm super, super happy for Swift Haven and I'll be really happy to get those 25 people off my lawn as soon as I can, off our lawn and into something that's stable. I would just like to share what I did tonight. I had a a mental health patient who was screaming because her and her boyfriend broke up in a very dramatic fashion as three people tend to do and she was upsetting a lot of other people and because she had a house to go into, I was able to escort her to her place of living and remove her from the situation and get her calmed down. That is a luxury I'm very rarely afforded in these last two months because we're all in tents pressed up against each other on the front lawn. I need 150 pallet shelters. This is the most depressing Christmas I have ever had because I want these people to have four walls and a roof for Christmas. And they're just getting moved around in tents. It's, I, we need emergency sheltering and Sad Paul is sitting on 50 pallet shelters and hasn't even talked to that company at all when they were supposed to be pricing between the two. We don't need between the two. We need both and he has Karen's dollars or money somewhere and he can buy those shelters for us and we could get 50 more people off that lawn and that would be huge. The more people we can get into four walls in a roof, the better off my life is. At least a third of these kids are the age of my child. They're 18, 20, 21, 22, like I have pregnant girls down there, like they need shelter, like this is, I can't keep screaming at you people. And apparently Mary or Karen or whoever was before me is really upset that I do, but guess what? With all her grace and all her dignity, you've got 150 people out there on the lawn suffering. So apparently it's not enough. I need more than that. I need you guys and I need you to push Sad Paul to get up off his butt and actually cooperate with you guys. The city's pulling The city's pulling some of the weight, and I'm super proud of that. And thank you, Seth. You're doing awesome. Keep it up. But we need Sapp Paul, and we need the county in on this. Please. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Catherine Orlowsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, this is Catherine Orlowsky. I'm a homeless advocate. I'm a board member of Homes Now. And I just want to come here first and say thank you, everyone. The whole community's come together, and it's really been working well. I'm happy to see the other agencies down there, the Rapid Test Unit, the Lighthouse Mission, Opportunities Council willingness to work around with us to get the much-needed resources to the camp. The EMTs have been great, the fire department, everyone, super great. I'm really happy. I just want everyone to think about, you know, I know many of us are very attached to being local. I am extremely, and I, I really believe in that firmly. And I, I just want to balance people's lives and how slowly the pallet shelters are coming in. I'm requesting that we work with multiple partners or even have locals build things. I mean, Homes Now has three, four hundred volunteers, and a lot of them are construction people. We just need these things built as fast as possible. Five a week? I'm just concerned about that. I know the other one will, in theory, come online. But please, just consider working with multiple partners. People can and will possibly die out there. A lot of vulnerable elderly, pregnant. And I also want to come here tonight to try to echo the voices of the campers. They are super grateful. It tears me up. They are so grateful, and I don't think their voices are showcased very often. And they want to really express gratitude. And I wanted to share a quick story about something that happened maybe a week or two ago. And one of the city employees had their window open, and somebody, one of the campers, shot a paper airplane up through her office window, third floor, and it absolutely blew me away, the skill it took to get that. It blew her away. And inside that paper airplane was a little note saying how much this camper was grateful. I really invite everyone to invite the campers to speak and share their stories because as I listen to them, they're heartbreaking. You know, there's, there are people that are sober down there. There's people that are, just fell through the cracks. We have a full range of people down there. There's addicts down there, mental health, you know, so much, and they just need help. There's people that are now sober down there from when they first came in the camp and they are, where they are now. It blows my mind how connected they are to the community they formed down there, how grateful they are just because they felt like they have some dignity now. So think of that, about that, all those things over the holidays. And I'm happy I'm expressing gratitude today, and I'm super, super grateful to everyone. Thank you, and I love you all. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Prissa Joy Clemens.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Chris Camara, a longtime listener, first-time caller. Hi, Seth, Hannah, Mike, the rest of you who haven't had the pleasure. I would just like to, for one, really applaud the city for working with Homes Now to start Swift Haven. Hopefully, this is the start of a, a better working relationship with the people who run the city and, and the homeless residents. I, number two, I would like to, again, address just how Bellingham is getting flooded with other homeless from across the nation. I've talked to several people at our gate. I'm a resident of Union Village through Homes Now and other people on the street, and people are just flooding here because of what we're doing and how we're handling things. I've been told that the camp downtown at City Hall is more like a festival than a homeless camp. It sounds like there's a lot of good people down there, but they don't necessarily always feel safe or protected there. There's fires, there's alcohol, there's drugs, there's stuff. So it's great that the, that we're trying to pursue building some temporary housing. But again, I, I really want to adamantly reiterate the point that the nation is watching us. What are we saying as a city? What are we saying just to our residents or our, or Bellingham residents, Bellingham homeless getting lost in the shuffle as new people move here because of what we're doing? But we could really be a light for the nation and show them how, how to do it, how to take care of people. I mean, we're Bellingham. We're the little city of love, which is a great possible new city slogan. Our sucks. Whoever would want to subdue excitement, I don't know. Anyway, that's really all I wanted to say, is we need to really just be aware of, of our language and not, and what we're saying not only to the homeless people here, but also to the nation. Building a house is great, but we also don't want to make, make it, it doesn't want to come across like we're just building holding pins either. I heard somebody earlier say, "These people," or as street people often do, "I want to get these people off my lawn."
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker.
HK?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi. Heather Cattodin, Tox Tang resident. Thank you, mayor, council staff, for your good work. I wish you healthy and safety during the upcoming holidays. Well, tonight, I'm speaking live outside of City Hall. And if anyone is inside, look out your window, and I'm here in the cold waving. And there's many other citizens out here, too. It's been quite the incredible year of Zoom, and our citizens are still working together, and some of them are still here outside of, of county and city, city halls. So I'm here because I support our unsheltered citizens through the process of applying for safe and warm tiny home shelters being created at the new Swift Haven site in our Ballfield parking lot. And I understand there's twenty-five tiny homes in process of being built and delivered. This is wonderful news. I share gratitude to city and staff and Mayor Seth for facilitating this process. However, my concern tonight is there are many more unsheltered citizens outside in our communities in tents or their cars. When I've reviewed the capacity we have potential beds for, combining base camp, overflow drop-in center, and the emerging twenty-five at Swift Haven, it's obvious that as a community, we will need many more safe winter shelter solutions. I'm aware that our Wacom County Council staff researched pallet hut shelters and that this company has fifty units, all built and available, to deliver before Christmas. Please, council, please, Mayor Seth and staff, consider what emergent actions you can take to identify more public unused land where these pallet huts can be placed as a housing-first village-style shelter before the end of this week. Tonight, while on a walk at City Hall, an elder citizen sleeping on the ground who uses a wheelchair expressed his desire to receive a safe, warm shelter tonight and shared he wasn't able to wheel himself down to the Health Department last week to be interviewed by the health nurses interviewing for Byron Street. He doesn't have a phone, and he asked me if I would call the Bellingham medics to visit him for a medical welfare check. He hoped they would know how to assist him getting into the quarantine shelter, and he didn't think he could make it through another night on the cold ground. And he needed closer access to a handicap bathroom. He had recently been discharged from the hospital. The medics came, were very thorough and helpful, and we all appreciate their good work serving our community. Unfortunately, their department system did not allow them to access the Byron Quarantine Facility.
Time.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, thanks to everybody. I forgot one person I really have to thank because she has been really doing a lot for us, and that's Tracy Lewis from the executive office. She has been putting together our packets, and that is not a lot of fun when you're doing about eight or nine other things. So Tracy, if you're still watching, hold your glass of wine up high, and here's a salute to you. So our next meeting will be Monday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. It will be a reorganization meeting. It'll be in the afternoon only. We won't be coming back that night.